This public hearing is called to order. Public hearing for Orders Number 2015-06. Amendments to the Orders Pertaining to the Chronicle Associating with the 501(c)(3) Charitable Organizations. Are any comments from anybody in the public? Any comment, Councilman?
Mayor, I have a comment on it. There is at least one portion of it that I don't agree with. And that's the portion to waive the fee, the $500 fee from doing business in the following. And, you know, they make big money over there. And they tire apart a lot of it. It's extra police protection. We have some people get trashed up, hired from them. And then we're losing money on our flea market too, rather than...
Any comments, Karen?
I'm agreeing with me.
Well, you know, we done that. We increased our fees from $250 to $500 to give employees a raise. And we start reneging on it. You know, we budgeted that money for the employees raises and we start giving everybody's money back. What we gonna do, take the money back from the employees? We give them. So I kind of feel the same way. Give any? Give me that. All right. This public hearing is over. I don't think Bob's gonna be here. Okay. The right of council meeting is called to order. Jill, you go on the private page, please.
As God agrees with us, everybody, like we've previously stated here this evening, thank you for these that help the city and does the business of this your city. We ask that you leave God these decisions made and all that is done before your glory is toward the citizens of the city's benefit. To those who were not able to be with us for whatever reason this afternoon, continue your watchovers, forgive us, lead God directs us. We give you all the praise, the honor, the glory, in the name of your Son and our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I plead the reasons to defy the United States of America and to create a public where which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Please be safe. Jill, you call the row, please.
Mr. Volenger.
Here.
Mr. Fannin. Mr. Hatmaker.
Here.
Mayor St. Hill.
Here.
Ms. Thompson.
Here.
Isle number four, approval of amendments for your meetings in August 2015. What's your counsel, please?
Move with approval, Mayor.
Have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Call the row, please.
Mr. Volenger.
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Yes.
Ms. Thompson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Isle number five, reporting your boards, your committees, and your department heads. What's your counsel, please?
Move with approval, Mayor.
Have a motion to have a second. Have a second, or Hans, will you call the row?
Mr. Volenger.
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Yes.
Ms. Thompson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Isle number six, any comments for the citizens? Nobody, be none. Any announcements? I have one, Jimmy. The Louis, Louis is gonna have something tomorrow, I think at 6:00, down at Cold Lake, not Cold Lake, Curable, at Holiday Express. You would think that.
It's Thursday night.
Oh, it's Thursday? Okay. Will you remind me?
Yes.
Okay. And we're all welcome to go down ourselves.
5:00.
5:00. I told you, just getting those getting harder, you know?
Yeah.
Okay. So we got two things?
It's a...
Okay.
Meeting at 5:00. The JONIC and I would develop board is gonna be part of that from 5:00 to 6:00. And the JEDBC board is meeting at 6:00.
Okay.
Back at the courtroom.
Okay. So we'll be busy first? Okay. Thank you, Karen. Okay. Under administrations, Isle number one, the house on East Prospect Street. That's the house at Wells Fargo, give the city. We talked about last night, a workshop, go ahead and declare a surplus and sell the house. I think the minimum bid was starting at $30,000. But first, council has to declare the house surplus. So what's the council's?
I make a motion, Mayor, that we go ahead, put the house and make the surplus.
Surplus. Okay, I have a motion, my answer to, make the house some surplus.
Can I make a recommendation that from the money spent from that, that it used to go to the...
Amphitheater?
Amphitheater. Does that have to be in the motion?
We can put it in a special projects account and then, you know, they probably, maybe other projects coming up also.
Okay.
So can that be an amendment to the motion?
Yeah, but...
This is just a surplus now on everyone.
Yeah, but a minimum bid of this thing would be $30,000.
Yes.
Okay. Was there anything else?
You wanna do all that in one motion?
Let's do it all in one. Is that okay if you answer to do it all in one motion? Okay.
Okay, I'll say nothing.
Okay, answer, okay. Call the row, please.
Mr. Volenger.
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Yes.
Ms. Thompson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Isle number two is the property on the corner of East Fourth Street and East Hillwalk. We talked about last night. The food pantry at East Follie is what we give the C.L. Follie, that corner of the lot over there. And we also mentioned that they're in dire need of some money for a fork truck pallet, for pallets, for their pallets. And Mr. Hatmaker made a motion, we take $2,000 from its own balance to him to...
Well, what they did, Mayor, that somebody, didn't they buy it from you, Johnny?
Yes.
They give you $40,000?
Yeah, just someone in the neighborhood.
Someone in the neighborhood, $40,000. And they're gonna give it to us.
I wish they'd get it back to me.
Yeah. Well, we may sell it back to you after we get, we're gonna give them $2,000 for, we're gonna help them buy a forklift. A type of thing for them. And hopefully that we can get our money back and return it. So I make a motion that we give them $2,000 and a forklift.
Okay, I appreciate that, Hans. Those people, like I say, most of them people are elderly people and there's all volunteering, nobody can see money out of it. And I go over there sometimes, pick up three people that don't have a way to get home. And I'm sure it'd be do that for the people. But I really appreciate you making that motion. It's a work of course. I have a motion.
Well, you probably need to amend your motion to say where the money's coming from, if you want it to come out of the fund balance or what.
Right. That's what he said last night.
Well, that's probably the only place we got it right now. So, but it doesn't really, you know, that's where it all goes. So when it comes down to it, there's someplace we can get it. But at the same time, if we turn around and sell it, the surplus of property, it'll go back to...
Well, it all don't go in that one fund. You know, we've got, each individual partner has their budgets too. We can take it out of Jimmy's, have the administrative budget.
I got $500 in that way.
You had $500, Jimmy. You just lost it.
But I second the motion.
It comes down to the balance. Call the row. You had $500.
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Yes.
Ms. Thompson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Isle number three is updating the property tax on the business license software. Let me read this. I just got this from Joy before the meeting started. And it says, "Please find and attach a copy of the latest correspondence I have received from Department of Revenue. This letter states that the C.L. Follie will be reimbursed the amount of $31,415.24 that was credited to the town and taxpayer in earnest. This will bring the new total of reimbursement from wrongful diverting sales tax to $158,322.56 to date." It says, "I also attach a copy of the email I received, correspondence from Ms. Hall, Department of Revenue, regards to requiring on the full amount of money that the C.L. Follie has lost due to refusing the address on the science report." Here is, here's some of the business people. And one of them is Food Line, SDI, the Follie, the Royal Industries, Premier Lawn, the Shepherd's Home Grill Store, Charlie's Pizza, Flares Bakery Company, and Polos. She also says, "As to collections prior to the last 12 months, since the policy in this regries to the past 12 months, I cannot go into detail regarding the time period. I apologize for any inconvenience." So Ms. Hall is working with us fairly well there. And we appreciate that, you know, just made it, city has lost over years and we're getting our money back, so we're gonna be the... Thank you, Karen. Okay. Isle number five, adding...
I make a motion that we...
I'm sorry, Joe.
Approve that, soft upgrade on the software.
Have a motion, Joe?
I second it.
Have a second, call the row.
Mr. Volenger.
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Yes.
Ms. Thompson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Isle number five, adding Barbara Wilson to the signature line on the chips. We talked about last night. What's council's?
Move with approval, Mayor.
Have a motion, but Joe, you have a second.
I second it.
Have a second, being called the row.
Mr. Volenger.
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Yes.
Ms. Thompson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Keep back up and do number four, Mayor.
Yeah. Postal code, post office issue. I'm sorry about that. We talked about last night, Joy and Mars and Karen, wondering if you use the post office?
That's another one.
No, that's...
Now?
This is one about changing the addresses. What you did last night was you made Reed permission to contact, contact the post office attorneys back.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe we table this the next month until Reed can get back with us on it.
I second the motion.
Call the row, you want?
Mr. Volenger.
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Yes.
Ms. Thompson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Isle number six, changing library building accounts to special projects account. We discussed it last night. Joe, you wanna collaborate on that some? About the name, what it's used for? Johnny?
We started that library account using the flea market money in order to help fund the building of the library. And actually, that got completed. We just left it, just named it, just left it in that same account. It'd be the same account, but it'd just be a new title on it. It'd be special projects, which could be used for amphitheater or whatever other projects that might come along, ATV.
Podcast.
Pardon?
Poll festivals.
Poll festivals or whatever. So that's the reason for the change is to...
Okay. Yeah, we done having this building library, okay? They have a motion to change library building accounts to special projects account. Have a motion, so call the row. Thanks, Joe.
Mr. Volenger.
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Yes.
Ms. Thompson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Isle number seven, adding Jimmy Jefferson to City Credit Corp. What's the clerk of council?
I make a motion, we add him to credit corp.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Call the row.
Mr. Volenger.
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Yes.
Ms. Thompson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Isle number eight, cost of utilities for the post office. Karen and Joy were here last night. You know, they, they used a library, I mean, library, post office. And they're all asked to go ahead and continue paying the utilities on it. And they've got some cleaning on it and painting around a bit. So much pleasure to cancel that.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we table this with persons. This was just brought up last night. I've not had time to really look into it to see what the cost of utilities are. And I'd like some extra time to look at it.
Have a motion, my hand, I have a second.
Second.
Call the row, Joe.
Mr. Volenger.
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Yes.
Ms. Thompson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Isle number nine, fees from McGill and Associates, which discussed it last night. Quinn, yeah, Quinn, why don't you come up and elaborate with Quinn a little bit?
Okay, let us know what you wanna be doing.
Quinn, if you don't care.
The proposal that I sent to you is really for us to do a cost estimate on some of the improvements that we picked out in the downtown Masta Plan. Specifically, it's to do a cost estimate for the intersections and then for the median improvements. So that the city can get a good understanding of what the, what the construction costs will be for those improvements. And then with the I-2, how you would fund them in the future.
So any questions for Quinn?
What all does the, the price that was quoted, what all does that entail that you're gonna be doing?
That would be for us, we'd like to come up and do a field, field visit and spend time at each intersection so that we can, the types of things we're gonna be looking to see is, when we did the downtown Masta Plan, we provide sort of an overall conceptual improvement for those intersections that would allow for better pedestrian access, crossing the streets, and some passive traffic calming. And so to do a cost estimate, we need to make sure that there's not, there's not a catch basin or something, or a stormwater structure in the way, or there's not a fire hydrant. We don't, we don't wanna propose improvements and then find out that there's conflicts with utilities or traffic or utility poles. So we come up and do a field visit and walk through each intersection and identify any challenges that we might see and get estimates and quantities from that. And then we'll generate a cost estimate that's itemized per intersection. So then you can look at the cost of the improvements for each intersection.
When you start moving power poles and water lines, it can be very expensive, Quinn.
Right. And that's why we want to have a full understanding of what the, of if there are any of those challenges. I'm not necessarily saying that there are, but there may be.
Right.
And we want to, we think it's better for the city to understand those challenges moving forward now and have a really good estimate of cost moving forward. That'll help you for your funding. It'll help you break down a limited approach of how you might do those improvements in the future. If you chose to do any, if you chose to apply for a grant, then we would help you with that as far as that goes.
Okay, you hit, okay, fine, okay. Well, council wasn't quite sure last night what details involved.
I, I thought it was nothing, girl, last night, I just wasn't able to do it.
That's okay, Quinn. Okay, you have, you have more questions, Quinn, Hans, okay?
Mr. Volens, are you, are you okay with that? Since you're the street department, man?
There are catch basins. I do know for a fact involved, there are fire hydrants involved. The lights, street lights, and the conduct, if you widen the sidewalk, and I think that's a discussion. The main water line feeding the businesses is under the sidewalk on each side of the These are things that I know of that will have to be addressed if you're able to do what you're doing, what you're talking about doing. Now, I'm just throwing that out there. I know for a fact that these are things that are gonna have to be dealt with. So...
Do you agree with it?
Agree with it. I'm just saying, I know for sure that these objects are out there. My question to Quinn, I guess, is, have you talked to anyone with F.A., Federal Highway Administration? 25 is a federal highway. It's also considered an ordinary state highway. Have you run into this by any of those folks?
When we were going through the Masta planning process, we talked to T.D.O.T. about the type of improvements that we were looking, were talking about and had proposed. And they said that they had, you know, they had seen those types of improvements done on other highways and they would be open to doing them. So as part of this too, we would continue that discussion with T.D.O.T. to make sure that any improvements that we're doing, they're agreed, they're agreed with too.
If you can get them to commit to that, okay, the discussions that I've had for T.D.O.T. from, with T.D.O.T., this is a main artery connector from East Tennessee, Southwest Virginia, Southeast Kentucky, a main connector to I-40, I mean, I-75 to Oxford, Oak Ridge. They are not gonna be very open to anything that restricts the traffic flow through Main Downtown Follie. Unless there's a bypass to handle the traffic. Well, that's the message I'm getting. If that's wrong, I apologize, but that's the message I'm getting from T.D.O.T.
I don't believe this, this stuff ever should be modified.
They are not clear to say to do anything to inhibit the traffic flow or inhibit the traffic flow through the Follie.
Yeah. I don't believe what, what we're talking about revitalize the downtowns, anything to the flow of tracks on through the Follie. It's more of a friendly safety thing for pedestrians crossing the highway. And then Craig...
Correct. The improvements that we're proposing, the lanes would still be the same width and there'd still be the same number of lanes and there'd still be the same turn lanes there are now. It's one of the main, one of the main improvements is right now, if you're a pedestrian standing at the crosswalk, you, you sit back at basically the entire parking stall width. And so it's very hard for moving traffic to see the pedestrian with all the pop cars and then they're, and then they're back 10 feet. So a lot of these improvements are to, you know, bring the pedestrian out to level with the, with the, with the flow of traffic. And that makes them more visible. And that in itself is kind of a passive traffic calming feature, but it's, doesn't impede the, doesn't impede, we're not proposing anything that would restrict flow of traffic.
I'm not for doing anything we can do to improve that thing, but the feedback I'm getting from T.D.O.T., they're not looking favorable. And that is coming down from, well, some T.D.O.T. personnel have mentioned it, since it is a designated, you know, 25 is a designated federal highway. And Federal Highway Administration is not looking real good on it either. So I'm just throwing that out there, you know? Don't base what you do on what I say, but I'm just there upfront while I'm here. So you all do what you want.
Mayor, I think at one time, there were some discussions about making part of downtown angle parking, and I think that's part of what T.D.O.T. had issues with. I don't know if the, the intersections where we have it marked that's not a turn lane, I think that they're just talking about moving to the edge of the road there and not actually out into the road. Is that what they're having problems with, Jim? I mean, it's just, it's gonna take up parking place. It's not gonna take up any of the...
Traffic angle, angle parking.
Yeah, that, that's completely out. Yeah, I think that's what T.D.O.T. had to...
Back around in the traffic.
That's what they had the issues, the issues with. I think what he's talking about now is just at the intersections where it's a parking place, not a turn lane, a parking place, extending the sidewalk on out onto that, into that parking place, where when they wait to cross the street, they're standing on the sidewalk out into that parking place.
I understand that the safety issues are both. As much truck traffic as we have on Tennessee North and South, Indiana North and South, and First Streets North, you know how hard it is to wait that turn, I'll rip. If you get that out of that, that street, well, that's all I'll do.
Ray, do you know of anything, reason why that would be a problem?
No, I don't even know anything about the project, to be honest with you. I'm not be with it at all. Jim knows a lot more about that than I would. Is it, is there a time element here?
No.
I wanna make a motion to go ahead with it, but I want to, at the same time, protect ourselves before we go to do something that would regret.
You're right. I told you, you might do that for a day, all you want.
My question is, is, have we not originally already paid McGill and Associates $27,000? Is that correct?
That's right.
Thereabouts, that, around about there, yes.
I'm just not sure if I'm spending another $6,500 for...
But the fee, the fee is very reasonable for what they're proposing to do. But the redevelopment downtown, it's an upgrade, is not gonna fly. We said from day one, unless the merchants jumped in with us, we can't fund all of it. And that was made clear from day one, first meeting we ever had. That at some point, they had to step in and add you up some money also.
But this money that we've already spent is just gone to McGill for them to look at it and see what can be done. Is that correct?
And conceptual drawings.
Yes, public drawings.
And all this stuff, yes.
And part of it is pretty common material.
And it's, and it's very reasonable for the amount of trips that they were out here for the meetings and the other trips that they were out here.
$27,000?
Yes. We, you get, you get an ear and term to come out and do anything these days, and $27,000 is not a lot of money.
Yeah. I guess the case to the thing is that the state's gonna do what they want to anyway. We're gonna have to do what they say. Doesn't make any difference. You know, I'm not putting you down, but it doesn't make any difference what you say or what we say. The state's gonna do what they wanna do anyway, or T.D.O.T. every, they gonna put in. But maybe we can work close with, with Jim and Jimmy and try to see where we're going with it, where we can go with it. And if we can, and try to make everybody agree, try to get everybody to agree with it. And maybe...
My goal here is, is to serve the city and help you, you know, make those downtown improvements a reality. And so we by no means want to get in a situation where we're proposing something that's not filed with T.D.O.T. From our initial conversations with T.D.O.T., we think what we're proposing is possible. And based on Mr. Volens' concerns, that would be our first stop in this next round, is to go back to T.D.O.T. and back to Mr. Volens to make sure that what's being proposed is, is possible. We're aware that it's a, you know, it is a truck detour out if I-75 is closed down. We discussed that with T.D.O.T. So their primary concern is that we don't impede truck traffic through town, and that's not, that's not the intentions of the improvement.
You know, this council, Quinn, has worked hard on this thing, about two years now, you know, his, our hands finally coming to the head, you know? Most, most merchants are pleased with what's, what's going on, except the ones that seem to drawings and pictures of it, they like it, you know?
I recognize that. I commend the council for the work that you've done. And, you know, we, McGill Associates has been here for much of that time and made a strong effort to help, help provide guidance and put together a document that will provide, you know, planning for the future.
Okay. If we do this $6,500 here, this will put us right up and get the thing started.
Correct. This will give you then the, an estimate to decide how you want to, you know, how you want to attack it from a funding standpoint and making those improvements.
Okay. And you apply for grants.
Correct.
I might, I might add too, you know, the $27,000 was not just specifically for that particular project, it was also for the extension of the trail.
Tank Springs, true, yeah.
Oh, from the connecting on Central Hall, we have to Tank Springs also. That was also in that project, that makes the pay.
Right. So where would this money, the, the budget from? We already set our budget for the year.
It had to come down to the balance.
My, my understanding is that if we have money left in the payment for the...
That's right, you're right.
If we have money left, I don't know if we do have it or not.
We should have some, a little money left.
That's just being, that's what the council wants to do.
You're, you're great. I'm sorry, you're right. So it may be some STP money, yeah. You know, if this thing will put us at where we can start doing it, revitalize downtown, you know, I'm for it. You know, I've worked hard, but it's some of the business people and Joe and Andy's on, he is involved. If you, you know, if this thing will move us forward, $6,500, obviously.
I have one question for you, Greg, if that's okay. Once you do, if you do, if the council votes and decides to do this with this $6,500, I know that the legislature commission has some grants out there for projects like this. Is that gonna be something that you will have to apply for as an A.R.C. grant?
We'd look at A.R.C. grant. Might be, might be a challenge for this project, but if it would be, if it's applicable, we would certainly do that. Probably some of the T.D.O.T. grants that are available are probably the most applicable. We can certainly look at A.R.C. grant. We can certainly look at A R C grants and see how we apply.
Well, and I guess doing all of this, if we do what we've already done with the master plan and then doing this, uh, I guess this is more of a specific, to give specific numbers for three intersections at this point from Tennessee to Indiana, uh, does this make the city more, uh, does it make us more likely to get grants if we've actually went through the process and have all this stuff in place prior to applying than somebody else who just applies for a grant who doesn't have a plan in place yet?
I think in the grant review process, it looks more favorable on the city. You can show that you have a plan and you have a vision for the improvements that you're proposing and then you've also then taken the time to understand the cost of those improvements and how to implement them. So I do believe that it's beneficial.
But it's given us two years to get this for, and you got a prayer, Quinn?
Correct.
Two years?
Correct.
And I can see when we come more capable, get a grant, when we've worked on it for two years and somebody's applying for it and don't have any paperwork.
Right.
Is there any more questions, Quinn? All right, Quinn, thank you, Quinn. I have a motion to accept the fees for McGill and Associates.
I'll make a motion.
Have a motion, Maggiore, have a second.
I'll second.
Have a second, Van Callroo, please.
Mr. Bollinger.
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Yes.
Ms. Thompson.
Yes.
Motion, jurors. I have number 10, change the speed limit in downtown Folly. We talked about the workshop last night. That was from Nice Street up here at the old Rich Creek building up to Walder Street and all of them, so.
Lordy, 3 miles, Mayor.
That's what was discussed, yes. And I'll say Chris Anderson, he said to me, I told you, he had a sign that might shoot out before, Chris, see if we could block it, you know, so.
I move with approval, Mayor.
I have a motion, Maggiore, have a second.
I'll second.
Second, Van Callroo, please.
Mr. Bollinger.
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Yes.
Ms. Thompson.
Yes.
Motion, jurors. Under Police Department, I have number 1, Amy Anderson has a full-time dispatcher currently part-time in 50, the ninth field, 15, starting salary is $22,540. Amy, you here? How early you are? What's the council's favor?
Move with approval.
Have a motion, Maggiore, have a second.
I'll second.
Call her over, please.
Mr. Bollinger.
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Yes.
Ms. Thompson.
Yes.
Motion, jurors. Welcome aboard, Amy. I have number 2, promoting Robert Fox to sergeant, 50, ninth field, 2015, $5,000 salary increase. Current salary is $31,023. I think Robert's going to take everybody to a cap back, it's free spring, the state.
Yes.
What's the council's favor for him?
I make a motion to approve.
I have a motion, Maggiore, have a second.
Second.
Have a second, Van Callroo.
Mr. Bollinger.
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Yes.
Ms. Thompson.
Yes.
Motion, jurors. Congratulations, Robert. I have number 3, sealed bids for the ATV. Do you want to lap around a little bit since you're involved in that?
Yeah, the city, I only received one set of sealed bids and that was from Tommy's Motor Sports. So if y'all want to approve the, approve the bids, we only got one.
Yeah, it couldn't be less than what we thought it would, would, right?
Yeah, it was $12,000 something.
$12,000, okay.
How much money did we have to talk rate for that?
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
The money comes out of the drug fund?
Yes.
Yes.
You have TV's recognition, what's the council's favor?
Move with approval.
Have a motion, Maggiore, have a second.
I'll second.
Call her over, please.
Mr. Bollinger.
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Yes.
Ms. Thompson.
Yes.
Motion, jurors. Under Fire Department, I have number 1, donating to old bugger gear, we talked about it last night, Charles, it's got a few turnout gear, it's, uh, needs to be surplus and give to the September volunteer fire departments in charge. You know two or three fire departments that needs a turnout gear, being where we've had and what we got?
Move with approval.
I have a motion to turnout gear, have a second.
I'll second.
Call her over, please.
Mr. Bollinger.
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Yes.
Ms. Thompson.
Yes.
Motion, jurors. I have number 2, declaring four trucks as surplus property, that's the 285, 285s, the tanker truck and the ladder truck, right?
That's approved, Mayor.
I have a motion, Maggiore, have a second.
I'll second.
I have a second, Van Callroo.
Mr. Bollinger.
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Yes.
Ms. Thompson.
Yes.
Motion, jurors. I have number 3, appropriate $600 for equipment for the first responder's truck, that's for station number 2 and that put station number 2, run up our station number 1 and force first responder out.
It'd give us everything we need left to be certified with the state, what state requires us to have.
Okay. They have a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Six hundred, okay, they have a second.
Second.
Have a second, Van Callroo, please.
Mr. Bollinger.
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Yes.
Ms. Thompson.
Yes.
What's the, Charles, we also discussed last night, when we made, we sell those four surplus trucks, maybe use some of that money to buy a first responder's truck.
Yes, we're working first responder out there, I would back it, it'd be good.
Yeah, that's harder than putting them in trucks, do you?
Putting them in trucks, yeah.
Okay, give them a cut down on all three fire trucks, one to...
Cut down, especially on fuel and wire power of the fire trucks, yes.
Okay, thanks, Charles. I have number 4, appropriate $2,500 for training line item for fire department.
We've never had a, we've never had a line for training and the way things are going now, the way the law's changing, we haven't used so much for training. By now it's a certified, it takes 11 steps and you take one, so we're having to do a lot more training now, a lot of us will have to be at the state fire camp.
Right. So all of this too, Charles, was buying books, right? That's $900.
Just the first responder, we still have 11 that is not being certified as first responder. All the unit that we do have right now in the department is the R R certified first responders, we haven't got that on the mountain as we've actually started the program. And we've tried several times to get a class put together and just have it happen. And we've got a class now, that's what it'd be, that's what it'd be done. The ambulance service, Captain Ambulance Service is sponsoring it and we have, they have qualified people to teach it, come from University of Tennessee, it's no cost to us, but they don't furnish books, running the books are like $900 a piece. So most of that money is going to go for the books to put this class on, to get our best of our man, the first responder.
Okay, Charles, before we go on this $2,500, first off, let me thank all the firefighters for the work they've done improving the municipal building here and Fire Hall Number 2. I know sometimes when our buildings go down, you know, and, but we budgets, council appropriated $40,000 to redo Fire Hall Number 2. And me and Terry put some money in the budget to paint the front of the municipal building. And everybody's brighter, don't have a front of the building, looks with the city logo with Alanya Green. And it come in way less than what we thought it was going to come in. And we want to have some money left over and I told Chief Rail that we could take some money we had left over and buy some paint, to paint back here from the coat door all the way to the dispatchers, the walls and stuff, it's got scuff marks all over it. But I just want to thank you guys, what you've done, as far as the post office, scraping the paint off that flagpole and painting and putting the flag up, that means a lot, you know. And in other fact, like everybody, there are these flags, people call me all the time about a flag, maybe it's a library or municipal building or direct center, it's been tore or faded or weathered, you know. Nine times out of 10, the call I get will be from a veteran. And me being a Vietnam veteran, you know, we should respect our flag in our country and we put new flags up in all of our facilities. If you happen to look and see that your flag is getting tore or faded or whatever, please replace the flag. Okay? All right. All right, that's all I've got to say on this thing.
Mayor, I'm making a motion that we appropriate $2,500 for the training line item. Second.
Have a motion, Van Callroo.
Mr. Bollinger.
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Yes.
Ms. Thompson.
Yes.
Motion, jurors.
This, this 600 and the 2,500 will be coming out of what CE is saying on the building. I don't know if that needs to be added in to the motions or not, that it comes from, that that's where it comes from, because he's got, he'll have, uh...
You'll have some money left over to appropriate, right? See, that's where, that's where, that's where we discussed last night.
I don't know if it needs to be included in the motion, just under the record, I think.
Okay, yeah, we did talk about it last night. Okay. All right. Under ordinance resolutions, ordinance 2015, day 06, this is the further final reading, amendment to the ordinance protecting carnal associated with the 501(c)(3) organization, this is the further final reading, that's the council's favor.
Mayor, I make a motion that we, you know, there's some parts of the ordinance and all that and a couple of parts that I don't want. I'd make a motion that we send the ordinance back and those couple items and bring it back before it's next month.
Okay. Postponer, do you have a motion, Maggiore, do you postpone until next month or have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second, Van Callroo, please.
Mr. Bollinger.
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Yes.
Ms. Thompson.
Yes.
Motion, jurors. Being over, this comes from his campus, Major John.
Power of the Bureau of the Beer Board, Van Callroo, please.
Chairman Bollinger.
Here.
Mr. Bannon.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Here.
Ms. Thompson.
Here.
We do, uh, we do have the, uh...
McGill Associates.
For bid. If you look at the bid on...
I have looked at, looked at the spear.
All right.
I'm actually looking, motion, counsel, approve it.
Got a motion, here, second.
Second.
Yep.
It still lays beers on my hand.
Okay.
Got a motion, second, Judge.
Yeah, call her over, please.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Yes.
Ms. Thompson.
Yes.
Motion, jurors. With the member who was...
Motion, Major. I got an announcement here, this is handed, it's called a meet and greet with Police Chief Bill Rail and Minister Jim Jefferson on Thursday, September 3rd, 2:15, lunch, sir. They're making one trillion at West East City Community Center. Your vice and vice, please come.
Johnny, we'd like to say thank you. This, this is something that we're all pulling together and it looks good to see, good playing the city too. I've looked at it the last few nights, it looks real good and whatever we're doing, it looks good to me.
It's working.
It does.
Hey, we can, we can, it's like, and our people, it's staying together, pulling together, just what we make. Right. Close that hand.